Good afternoon, everybody. On this special Saturday edition of our third and final interview for the second round. We will then bring it over to Patty to introduce the candidate. Thank you.
Hi.
Good to see you again, Ryan.
Good to see you again. It's been a long time.
I know.
It's nice to see you. Hi, Ryan. Nice to see you. Good to see you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Yeah, no, thank you. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. It's time for our interview with our third candidate, Dr. Ryan Lager, who is currently the superintendent in Belle Plaine Public Schools. Here's your seat.
Oh, good afternoon, Dr. Lager.
Good afternoon.
And welcome back.
Thank you.
Wanted to set the ground rules for today. We're going to have sixty minutes for, not sixty? Yeah, sixty minutes. Forty-five minutes for eleven questions. Forty-five minutes for eleven questions and including then a wrap-up statement. So we've...
One hour.
Is it one hour?
Yeah, it's one hour.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
I always need more time, you know.
You'll take that extra fifteen minutes.
Practicing my succinctness.
So with eleven and a statement, that makes it a lot easier than putting, I think it was forty-five minutes and fourteen the last time we did this. So please begin by very briefly highlighting your professional experiences and how they have prepared you to be superintendent in Osseo area schools.
Yeah, I've had the opportunity to share this a number of times with you, so I'm just going to highlight a few things. And one thing, I've had a lot of, I had a great learning experience yesterday, so I had a lot of opportunity to reflect and put some notes together during the day yesterday and last night as well. But, you know, the one thing I've learned in working with people is it's a lot easier when someone's leading you when they've walked in your shoes. And I think that's what, a strength of mine is, is the fact that I've been an elementary teacher, I've been a middle school teacher, and I've been a high school teacher. I understand, working with kids at those ages, interacting with parents through those experiences. I've served as an assistant principal and I've served as a high school principal in two high schools that are both larger than any of the high schools in the district. You know, Maple Grove's about twenty-one, one hundred and seventy students. Osseo sixteen, twenty. Park Center fifteen oh one. Stillwater was twenty-two, hundred and fifty when I was there, and Champlin Park was over thirty-two hundred when I was there at the time. So being able to work in large environments like that and understanding curriculum and instruction, professional development, unique scheduling, all the things. When I have a conversation with principals, they can look at me and know that I've sat in that seat, and I think that's an advantage. In addition, I've had the opportunity at the district level to oversee operations, technology, finance, all of the areas that are in the district. In addition to that, I've been a part of overseeing special ed audit. I've been a part of seeing Title I audits, finance audits, food service audits. So I know what that process entails when you're working with a department and make sure you have everything in order. I've had the opportunity to lead and be a part of both referendums that have been successful and ones that have failed. And I think that's an advantage because you learn a lot when you don't succeed about what do you need to do going forward. I've been a part of having to make budget reductions, both to sustain fund balances, but also to build fund balances back. And that's a very difficult process when you have to cut money just to put money in the bank, but you understand that you need that money to make payroll. And luckily, here, you're not in that position, but I've been a part of having to do those things. In addition, sitting in the seat of the superintendency, I've had to see it from a political lens. Just last week, I testified in front of a House committee on school start times. I testified on e-learning days during that time. I've also worked with schools for equity and integration, MREA and AMSD, on being able to, we had a bill sponsored around long-term facility maintenance, working with Senator Kent, Senator Housley, on both sides of the aisle there in representative Depp Marotta, Forest Lake. So I have experience working with the legislature, and in a large district like that, that's significantly important. It's a big job, and those are kind of the tangible preparation pieces. But there's four things that I just want to highlight quick in my experience and what I learned from students and staff and them yesterday, but that I think give me an advantage and something that I think I could bring to the district. Education is a great equalizer. In each of my experiences, we've talked a lot about the achievement gap. When I was at Champlin Park, we were on the AYP list in ten of twenty categories, which I talked about. Many of those areas were students of color where we needed to close a gap. We got off that list. When I, last night, a lady asked a question about, what are you going to do for my kids who are in AP and if we bring the level down? And when I was at Stillwater, we actually raised our AP, our ACT score by one point four points over five years. So there were programs and things we did to make sure we were supporting those students who wanted to stretch their learning even further. In the situation I'm in now where we look at a general population of students, we administer seventeen MCA tests. Five years ago, we were below the state average, and fourteen of those were down to six. And hopefully, through some of the work we're doing in math with Khan Academy and that, we'll lower a couple of those and maybe only be three or four below the average, with the goal of having all of them be above the state average. So, and then the second piece is I'm really passionate about education. I love to get out of bed every day and go to work. You know, I realize that we hold the keys of opportunity and doors for so many kids, and sometimes we lose sight of that. But we are their hope for the future. The programs we have, the work we do with them are going to open doors and close doors of opportunity based on what we do. You know, and I said this briefly last night, but I always think to myself, I want to do something that'll make my future self proud. And I think about this district and the challenges I've heard about. And if in three years I could look back and say that every part of this district, people feel like their voice is being heard, they're being represented and they're respected. Not that we can do everything people want to do, but just that they feel they have a voice and a seat at the table, that would be something that would, I would definitely make my future self proud. And the last two pieces are just leadership development. The one thing I would encourage any district is, to have a high-functioning district, you have to have solid teams. You have to have a board that works together and really is focused on what's best for students. You have to have a high-functioning cabinet, and you have to have high-functioning administrators. If any of those three are not functioning at a high level, the school district cannot achieve its full potential. And I've worked in a district where we had outstanding leadership at the district level in the cabinet, in principals, but the board struggled, and we felt that struggle, and we never reached our full potential as a result of that. So I'm mindful of that because I've sat in that seat and been a part of that. And the fourth piece I want to touch on is I'm willing to be vulnerable. I will acknowledge that there are kids and adults in this community who know far more about some of the challenges we face. And I am willing and actually excited to sit and learn from them and embrace ways that I can help them so we can answer what I talked about earlier of every voice being respected, every voice being able to be at the table and feel like they have a presence within our school community. So those are the four pieces, really. Education really equalizes the playing field for everyone, our passion, leadership development, and then a willingness really to be vulnerable with our community.
Thank you.
In your work to close the achievement gap, what specific strategies have you used and what have been the specific outcomes?
Yeah, I've talked about a few of those. I talked about Project Succeed. I know in one of them where we had supportive, we partnered teachers together. So kids who had failed all their classes in eighth grade came into ninth grade, and then the teachers met with them in the morning to make sure they were completed with their homework for the day and all those pieces. We provided really structured support. They'd go through the day, they'd meet with the other teachers on the other end that were partner teaching to make sure, here's your homework for the night, make sure you get it done. And that cycled through, and that the majority of those kids ended up passing all of their classes then in ninth grade. I've talked about Avid. You know, the one thing I learned in the district is Avid's prevalent at some elementaries, maybe some middle-level high school. That's one thing I would say, if we're going to do Avid, we have to do it K-12, and it has to be systemic, because you can't provide help for students in elementary, and then they might end up at a middle school where they may have the support and they may not. And the whole theory of Avid is really looking at kids who are first-generation college students or who don't really have a connection to that. How are you going to support them and get them there? So I'd really be looking at expanding that to a K-12 focus. But beyond all that, Kelsey asked me a great question last night about how are you going to involve community and different voices and bring people to table? And one of my greatest learning experiences yesterday was the opportunity to interview with the students. It was the best student forum I've ever had. The one thing I will tell you about our students is they know what the challenges of the district are. They have some really good ideas about how we close them, and they represent every pocket in our community. You know, so I walked away from that saying that I, you know, if you ask me what I'm going to do in those first few months, it's going to be having student forums, going in, just walking into classrooms. And I do this often anyway, just to ask their opinion. I gave the example of when we didn't hire subs in a calculus class, and I walked in and I asked the students, and they said, thanks for not hiring us a sub. These were eighteen-year-old kids who I got what they meant. We were hiring them a babysitter because typically the teacher we hired to sub for them couldn't teach calculus. So we hired an adult to come and sit with them. Well, they had to do calculus on their own anyway. I mean, they pointed out something that should have been so obvious to us. That was an example of what I've done in this situation. But what I learned from that yesterday is, we can learn a lot from the kids. And I just jotted down some of the questions that some of the students asked. One of the students asked me a question about, how are we going to ensure traditions and cultures are brought out into the classroom and instruction? I know there's been a lot of work done around culturally responsive teaching or pedagogy in the district. And this gets back to what I talked about in the first part of the interview about being a principal and having conversations with principals. So, you know, there's seven steps really in that process of culturally responsive teaching, and this would fall under either learning with context of culture or culturally mediated instruction. And the one, the one thing that I thought was interesting is, I would want to talk to the principals about, what kind of rounds do you do? Do you do three-minute rounds, five-minute rounds? How often are you in the classroom observing these things? Like, we have to know, how often are our teachers, are they responsible for implementing all seven of these in one year? Are they picking one or two of those things? And what does that look like? But as a principal, having that conversation with principals, I can talk about, you know, we used to do four rounds a year. They would be twenty-minute rounds. Here's what the focus was around them. And then they can share, and we can have a dialogue, because I've been in that high school principal role before, or I've been in that assistant principal role, so I can have that conversation. So for me, those are some of the things I'd look at. Another thing was, I talked last night about the six-year planning process. I had a student walk-in during my administrative interview last night, and she didn't, wasn't supposed to be there, so she kind of laughed and smiled, and I just asked her her name, and I said, what grade are you in? And she said, well, I'm a senior. And I said, what are you going to do next year? She said, oh, I'm only going to go to MCTC. And I looked at her, I said, you're not only going to go to MCTC, you're going to go to MCTC. And I said, what do you want to major in? And she goes, a teacher. And I'm like, it just resonated with me. That's what that process is about. We have to change that mindset. If we're going to close the achievement gap, a kid can't look at going to MCTC as a bad thing. I actually told her, I said, one of my best friends is a dentist, and he only went to Anoka Ramsey, you know? And then he owns a dental practice. And I said, and he only works three days a week, so he's a little smarter than all the rest of us. But, but, you know, in that process, what it is, is she will build a plan every year in ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade. She's going to talk about going to MCTC and being a teacher. So that process will change the mindset. When she walks in that room, she's going to say, I'm going to go to MCTC, and I'm going to be a teacher. That in and of itself is going to change the motivation level that will encourage and motivate her to see that plan and where she's going. One other, there's just two other pieces I want to hit really quickly. I had a great conversation with Mike. Sometimes we have things in place in our system that actually prevent us from doing what we do. We've talked a lot about how do we get more teachers of color or more leaders of color. There's a basketball coach at Park Center. I met him twenty-five years ago. He's one of the, one of the best guys I've ever met. And I asked Mike what he does, and he said he's an assistant principal in Hopkins. And I'm like, why is he in Hopkins? He said, because he can't coach in the district. And then Mike went on to tell me, he said, we have a lot of individuals of color who want to pursue leadership, but they want to continue their passion of coaching, but they can't do it here because we're saying you can't coach and be a principal or an administrator at the same time. And I'm sitting here thinking, well, I've been a basketball coach. I've been an administrator. I'm actually in a small district right now, and I have an admin, my junior high principal is our girls' basketball coach. It works. You can do it. She also does community ed, which I don't know how she has the time. But we have to look at, do we have these systemic problems that are actually causing people to leave our district, people of color, because we're not allowing them to pursue that passion? And I start to think about how many kids that individual could impact. Right now, he's impacting eighteen kids a year as a basketball coach. If he's an assistant principal in our district, he can impact, you know, hundreds of kids, thousands of kids over a period of time. So it's looking at systemic things that are preventing us from achieving some things that we think are important. And then the last piece I wanted to talk about just was partnerships and the importance of that. And I haven't done a good job articulating this, I don't think. But we always say that who you know often matters more than what you know when it comes to getting a job. And that's why I want to talk about the partnerships in the community. We have to help get our kids out there. If we have Xavier from Park Center, who's a gifted artist, and he was in marketing, if he gets a job at Target in an internship and has a couple hours a day to build a relationship, and then general, and he goes to college and gets a marketing degree, he's looking for jobs, and there's a guy at General Mills who knows the guy at Target and needs a marketing person. The guy at Target can call him and say, hey, you got to get Xavier. He's got a flamboyant personality. He's extremely talented. We need our kids to be able to make connections so they can get recommendations to be able to get jobs. Because like I've said before, we can, we can get our test scores at some point to be even, but we're missing what the next question's going to be. And that's the opportunity to have those connections where kids can exceed. So, so that's kind of how, I'm kind of giving a synopsis of what my learning was from yesterday around the achievement gap and things that I really want to look at that just aren't focused on test scores alone. I feel like I've talked enough about what that side of it is, so. Thank you. I'll be faster now. I know, I'm behind.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ryan, how will you apply your experiences in order to lead a district this size? And what might stay the same and what might you change?
Yeah, you know, and I say, I've spent the majority of my career in large districts, so it's always about scaling. And as I've said over and over, I think the strength of taking some time to go to a small district and be able to do all the jobs at the ground level of transportation, food service, HR, negotiating contracts are, you know, the one piece I want to say is the people I've interacted with here are very talented. And that's, I always believe in letting people do their job. But there are times where, if you get into a teacher negotiations or contracts where things get really difficult, I can have that conversation. If some ideas we've done to actually help settle contracts, I may have things that I can look at that I know from other districts, and I can share that conversation because I've done that work before. So it's all about scaling those things. You know, I know in this district, a district of this size where, when I was in Stillwater, you know, we were the nineteenth-largest district in the state. There's things that you just don't have time to get to that you have to have really good people to do those pieces. So part of that also is talent acquisition. I'll say that about leadership. You know, there's two things. You, you, I always say, the measure of a leader is when you leave. Is the team you leave behind better and more talented than when you got there? And that happens two ways. It happens through how do you develop them and empower them to do their job? And in some cases, it requires you to make changes in positions, but then it requires that skill of acquiring talent and being able to hire them. So those are pieces, I would say, it's all about scaling. But I've spent the majority of my career doing a lot of this work in large districts. And like I've said all along, I think the ability to be able to do this all at the grassroots level allows me to have a more educated conversation with the various departments you have in the district because I've, I've done those pieces before.
Thank you.
Thanks.
What are the key components of a successful curriculum and instruction program in a district, and how do you get each school involved in that effort?
Yeah. That starts with a district framework. In some districts, it becomes a policy. I guess that's a good conversation about whether we want it to be a policy or a framework. And as a, I think it's important to work with the board. You know, that's a good work session conversation where we bring in a director of curriculum instruction, we bring in our assistant superintendents. I think we bring teachers into that conversation. You know, and you want to have a complete picture of the system weighing in on that. But, you know, some pieces that I know that I've used, it, you know, it has to fit your mission of your district. It has to be quality. You want to adapt quality programming. It's got to be age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate. I always talk zone of proximal development. Has to have a K-12 focus. I'll tell you, one of the biggest mistakes I see in curriculum development is, math curriculum is a good example. Typically spirals. So if you have a K-5 math curriculum, it's spiraling. Mastery happens every year and a half to two years. If at sixth grade, you go a different direction, you have a bunch of kids that have all these feelers out there where they've never reached proficiency or mastery, and now you go to a different curriculum. And then we change again at ninth grade. So you want to really focus on how, and talk about the importance of a K-12 focus. It's got to have diversity of views and expression. It's got to promote tolerance and respect and teach kids about those components. You know, it's got to be a reflection of history and diverse perspectives and in teaching history from multiple different lenses. I think as I've gotten older, I think of how I was taught history and experiences I had to what I've been able to learn now. We have to make sure that there's diversity in that perspective. Another key component is about teaching kids about the democratic process in society. So those are just some general ideas of things that I've been a part of that have become a part of district policy or district framework. And then behind that, it's a professional development focus that's twofold. What's the structure? We front-load all of our PD, where we do four days of really in-depth professional development before the school year starts with our teachers. Then we give them all a workshop week to take what they learned and plan with their teams to take that into the school year. Because one of the things I found as a teacher is you have a Friday professional development day in August, it would be, or in October. It'd be great, but on Monday, the kids come back and you have to teach, and you can't apply it. You know, or then you have a day in April, and you have a great learning experience, and you're like, okay, I'm going to think about this in the summer, and you never do again. So we changed our structure where we put it on the front side. This year, it was envoy. We did very in-depth training. All of our teachers have a goal around one of the envoy gems. Our principals have been trained. That's our one focus around PD. That's the other thing with it is it has to be narrow and focused. And then it's got to be a solid plan around what we need. You know, so I love the culture, culturally responsive pedagogy and teaching is a great framework to work on. It's just about how we, are we going to, are we going to do all seven in a year? Are we going to do two, those kind of things? Then the feedback loop to involve everybody. I'm sorry, the design. We'll have a design team at every grade that does that, and then it starts with standards. You're going to unpack the standards. You write essential questions. You write learning targets that need to be displayed in the classroom. And I often say, I often want the kids to write the learning targets out, and I always tell, I always explain it to teachers this way. If I were to ask you, what's four-hundred-and-thirty thousand times point zero-six-seven? You couldn't solve it. But if I give you a piece of paper and a pencil, you could do that math problem. And that's the difference in a learning process, how our brain works. If I just look at a learning target or a teacher just tells me it versus as a student, if I actually write down what I need to know and able to do. So we actually do activities like that with staff too. But then looking at a system of assessment, where formative assessment evaluates the learning targets, the summative assessment is the evaluation then of the essential questions, learning targets. And then really promoting a system that focuses on learning instead of chasing points. Because a lot of kids in the system I grew up in, it was just about chasing points to get As. And then the feedback piece is PLC conversations should be driven by learning targets, essential learning outcomes, and assessment. And then we quarterly, we want to bring, so if you have seventeen elementary schools, every quarter, we're going to bring the third-grade teachers together, and they're going to have discussions about how are the learning targets working? Are the essential questions appropriate? Are the assessments working? Are they too rigorous or are there too many questions? Are there not the ones that are common? So you create that feedback loop. And then the principal evaluation piece needs to tie into that. Principals have to understand curriculum and be able to assess, is it being implemented with fidelity in the classroom or is it not? And then all of that information feeds to a curriculum advisory council in the district, which all districts are required to have, and you normally meet four or five times a year to review this. But if this process is succinct like this, the conversation at those meetings become much more rich, and I think your attendance becomes a lot better because a lot of people struggle to get attendance at curriculum advisory meetings. So that would be kind of just the general framework, district, how you're going to design it, and then the feedback loop really comes through your professional learning community process, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a follow-up question.
Yep.
You've spoken about proximal zone of development.
Yeah.
Can you talk about how that plays into the key components of successful curriculum and instruction?
Yeah, so it's, you know, we use FastBridge testing. You know, we used to use NWEA. One of the reasons we moved away from an NWEA was our MCA scores were actually higher in math than NWEA than they were in reading. But our MCA scores, reading was significantly higher than math. So we were using this as a benchmark assessment, but it wasn't lining up at all. So we've been working with FastBridge the last couple of years, but we do three times a year diagnostic testing. And those are bigger benchmarks, but in literacy, for example, then we use a balanced literacy curriculum where the teachers confer with students. So, you know, every three or four weeks, they're going around and they're assessing based on their guided reading groups, based on their independent reading, spelling, vocabulary development. The teacher has that one-on-one, and then they make adjustments. But then we have the three times a year where we benchmark test using FASTAssessment to make sure then that kids are getting into, are at that right zone. Some are going to move, some may need additional help or support. I talked a little bit about the CON program we have, where we use that as a diagnostic tool, where we looked at kids who in seventh grade now weren't proficient on the MCA in sixth grade. We wanted to focus on the areas that they weren't proficient in. That diagnostic tool did that, and then that's what they're working on now in Khan Academy. So that's really where zone of proximal development fit into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
What have you done in your district to promote E-12 education and the importance of early childhood education?
I talked a little bit about this last night, but early childhood is really the foundation. And when we talk about retention of students, I said last night, and I'll say it again, we want to make sure it's hard for district, for parents to leave our district. And if we do E-programming really well, and we scale that up, and we have really good first-grade literacy, second-grade literacy, I'll say over and over, I'll put our K-2 literacy instruction up against anyone. But the reason is, we had a charter school that was taking a number of our kids because they advertised they had such a strong reading program. Well, our third and fourth grade reading scores have been outstanding, so it's making it hard now for parents to say, well, I'm not going to take my kid over to this charter school because of how well our kids are doing in literacy instruction. And I, that's a credit to our teachers responding there. But we've, we've recognized a lot of things, I think we've learned from our community. So some of what we've done is, testing is huge for us. We're number one in the county in testing kids in early childhood to make sure that we get them the support and help they need. Our 3-4 program is designed around the early childhood indicator progress standards. And then those standards are vertically articulated to our kindergarten standards for 3-4. We put our teachers, actually, on our teacher contract. Some groups have negotiated those in their own group off our teacher contract, but they do everything our teachers do. So we want to make sure that they're, they're on our teacher. It's only fair that if they're doing those things. So the other thing is, we didn't have a lot of, we had kids that couldn't get to our preschool. So we offer a wraparound program now where you come to preschool. We'll provide daycare at the school site because we want you in our preschool. So that's helped us ramp up our 3-4, getting more kids into our program. And then we created a begin-to-garden program, which is a kindergarten option. So kids that have birthdays in June, July, and August have an option to enroll in begin-to-garden. And then it's a kindergarten option program, so they follow the standards. But at the end of the year, parents make a choice whether the kid goes to kindergarten. And every year we have a couple of kids whose families choose they can go to first grade and they're prepared to do that. But that closed the gap because we noticed we had a lot of kids in those summer birthdays who parents didn't want them to start school, but they didn't quite know what to do with them. So that begin to garden program's been a really good option for us. But tha- that's really been our focus of e-learning. But we pay attention to that because we know if we get them, we keep them, so.
Thank you. How have you balanced a set of priorities and expectations for teachers to ensure focus and time spent on the most critical priorities and day to day instruction?
Well, for me, a big thing is too many initiatives. We're always on initiative overload in school districts. So we actually mapped our initiatives one year at a summer retreat. And we had paper from the ceiling down, probably covering one whole wall in here. And when you're trying to do everything, you won't do anything well. So like I said, we, we try to envoy. It's one professional development focus that our teachers are working on this year. And that's what we're gonna work on. We have a plan for new teachers to be onboarded next year. And then we're moving forward with the second step of envoy with teachers. So it also, I want teachers to be able to teach and not spend time doing all of these other things. And I want them to know what our focus is. So that's one piece. A, a second piece is eliminating, like we had teachers who were assigned duties, like they have to sit in the hallways or do things because we had to assign a duty. And I was, why do we have to sign a duty? Well, they need a duty. Well, their duty can be, they can have additional prep, so they're prepared for class and that. So we got rid of those extra duties because I, I don't need them standing in the hall supervised. We weren't having any issues there and, and it was taking away time from planning for instruction. We're changing the way we're doing parent teacher conferences. We've had such poor attendance and I just don't think it's flexible enough for our parent community. So we're actually looking at a model where it'll still be eight hours, but it might be four hours on a Wednesday morning and four hours on a Wednesday afternoon. And parents can schedule a conference. They can do a conference via FaceTime. They can do a conference via Skype. But we're creating some flexibility and creativity in what that looks like in trying to bring more parents into the fold, at least to be able to communicate with the teacher at the secondary level. E-learning days. We, uh, we actually used an e-learning day because our elementary teachers needed some preparation time to get prepared for conferences to work with the parents. So we piloted our e-learning experience. And it allowed teachers to be able to use that as preparation time because the kids weren't there that day. The learning piece was happening at home. So a lot of unique things like that. And I think the other thing is that curriculum design process I just talked about. The more succinct it is and simple, it's all around essential questions, learning targets, system of assessment and professional learning communities. And it's very clear. It's not a bunch of things coming at them from a variety of different places. I think that has helped to really keep the focus. I want teachers to teach and I talked a little bit about last night with special ed. I want special ed teachers to be in front of kids, working with kids. I don't want them working on paperwork all the time. I know they have to do paperwork, but I don't want them to spend the majority of their time there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Question number seven. How do you communicate to your staff, students and community members in your current district? And what different strategies and actual tools do you use currently? And please share an example of a time when you have successfully used those strategies.
Yeah. So, um, communication is, is, is two ways. One of the things we did is we had, we all had our own individual Twitter accounts and Facebook. And, and we, we really, we, what we decided was our, it kinda fractured our community. Certain people had the activities Twitter account. Certain people had the high school Twitter account. Certain people had the elementary. So we, we aligned everything under one. So we have BP Tigers Twitter, we have BP Tigers Facebook. Now, all of us have access to it, so we can post in it. We can share information in that. But it allows two thousand members of our community to come to one hub to get that information. And, and it's, and we kind of established an expectation that's how it was gonna be. Now, when you talk about a big district, how do we scale that up? We're obviously not gonna have one for all Osseo schools. And, and even the size of some of our elementaries, it might be unique to elementary. But that'd be something we'd work with the communications department on about what does that look like right now? And how is it working for our district? So that's one thing we did is we gained consistency. So families knew they had one spot to come to. The other thing I do is I write a weekly article for a, for the paper. And a lot of people don't read the paper anymore. So we use our, I'll call it our school cancellation system because we've been using it for that a lot lately. But we actually have a calling system that sends an email to all the people in our community. We use Infinite Campus as a student management system. And that is the same system then that we use to communicate. But our communications person will take that and then she'll send it out and emails out to all the families. And I really try to make those focus on, you know, I've talked a little bit, our mental health initiatives. I've talked about envoy, so they understand what's happening from a teaching and learning perspective. I stay away from just the basketball team one. You know, I'll do something around the musicals and things like that. But it's not just an update on how our activities are doing, not that that's a bad thing. That's kind of what we use Twitter and Facebook for. This is more focused on what's happening in the schools to really improve the quality of what your kids are being able to experience. Our one to one initiative, those kind of things. And then, uh, you know, the other thing that I've talked about that I've done, I've spent a lot of time looking at, but is how is that way that we bring more voices in and we connect more people? And that's the idea of what I talked about last night around a thought exchange and using that program. I actually emailed them last night based on Jackie's question around, um, you know, connecting different dialects. And they, they actually did respond right away saying they're looking at a multicultural solution. I emailed them back and said, well, it can't increase the cost. So we'll see what kind of thing we get from it. But, but I do think it's a good tool of how do we find a way to get more voices in through the use of technology? And I think what's good for me to realize through that is we're not gonna get all the voices through that, but we still wanna find a way to get more voices to the table. And that's a tool that can do that.
And that thought exchange, you talked a lot about it. Is that something that's currently in use or?
No, we're, we're not using it right now. One of the problems I have is our district is small enough in the setting we're in. So I've been talking with districts that are a little bit larger and trying to find ways of how we could do it. And we're probably in a budget situation now where we could look at bringing it in and using it. But I've talked with, I visited with a superintendent in Indiana, Texas, California, a number of places that have used it and how they used it. North Branches is one, a district who used it. I go back to why we became a, a lot of districts went to four day school weeks as they couldn't pass referendum until the state put the three hundred and the four twenty-four option that you could take in place. They had to go onto a four day school week. And one of the things that actually got them to pass the referendum, if you had talked to Deb, was that thought exchange. They just followed exactly what the community contribute, contributed. That's what they did, it's what they asked for. And they passed a referendum and they had had a number of failed tries. And, and I think we're kind of at a point, I don't know what we're gonna do. That was kind of my first, um, knowledge of that process. But I've spent a lot of time, I just, I like to learn about things and try to understand how does it fit? And how does it work? And that's, that's where I am in that process, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Please describe for us what you consider to be the key components of the best learning environment for students.
I, I think it starts with the conversations I've had about social emotional learning. We, we can't walk away from that. That is, kids have to be healthy. It doesn't matter how smart they are, how much they learn, how skilled and talented they are. If we don't deal with the mental health piece. And it's an educational piece, making them aware of it. They may not have struggles with mental health, but I think all of us can benefit from learning about stress, pressure, anxiety. I guess we are, I don't know anybody who's never experienced stress, pressure, anxiety. So maybe we all do deal with that, that side of it. But I think that's first and foremost, one of the most important pieces. Then it's really about preparing kids for the workforce they're going out into. So it's the personalized learning piece. With technology, especially one to one, we have the capacity to personalize learning like we've never done before. We have the ability, like I've talked about literacy, to give kids access to two or three thousand titles so they can find books of interest in their zone of proximal development that they actually can read. Where if we had to buy paperback books, we'd never be able to afford to do that. The other thing we talk a lot about is, is I want all of our kids involved in, in arts, athletics and activities that are associated with our school. Some people call them soft skills. I know talking to Patty last night, she called them grit. But, you know, we spend so much time sometimes talking about the academics. You know, when we do our year end retreat with the board right now, we talk about arts, athletics and academics. What does our programming look like? What does our test score look like? What are, what's our involvement in arts and athletics? What's our clubs and activities? How many clubs and activities have we added? You know, we have trap shooting now. We have a variety of things that I thought we would never have in schools. And, and we had forty or fifty kids in our trap shooting team last year, you know? So we have a, we had a mountain biking club when I was in Stillwater that we added. So it's really about finding what kids passions are and trying to connect them to the school community. Because a lot of those skills are gonna be what are gonna allow them to be successful when they get out into the workforce. So those are some of the components, I would say. But really it's personalized learning. It's about creating unique and creative schedules. So if we do pathways programming, we're gonna have to create schedules where kids are gonna have a block of time to go do this. And then they can come back over into the six or seven period day and still take the classes that are required for graduation. So it's looking at unique programming. To me, that all fits under the idea of personalizing that learning experience.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you could bring any new program or innovation to Osseo with no restrictions.
Blank, blank check?
I love this question. What would you call on the board to research and fund?
You know, the, the, the most, I firmly believe in what I talked about earlier. Pathways programming is the direction of the future. We have to set up systems that prepare kids for the world they're, they're going into. And I gave the example, I, I don't know if the board was there for it, but I had an opportunity to listen to a guy from Google and he talked about the need to change our K twelve educational system. And, you know, when they purchased Google Docs, uh, or the whole Google suite and they were moving that direction, they had to come up with a new business model. And he was in charge of doing that. So, you know, he went out, worked with teams and interacted with people. And, and then he gave the question where he would say, you know, if, if you and I, if you knew the first part of the physics test, Jessica, and I knew the second part of the physics test, but you didn't know anything on the second part and I had the first part. And we got together and we worked on it, we would get a perfect score on that physics test, right? But in a school, what is that? It's cheating, right? He said, you know, when I sat down with the CEO of Google to give him my business plan, I'm pretty sure if I would've told him that I worked on it alone, I would've got fired. And it was one of the best analogies I've seen between how we have to change our system from what it is to what it is we have to become. So when you ask that, I would talk about pathways programming where we would remodel our facilities and sites. And I talked about this a little bit last night. You have a high school in the South Metro that's got a hospital with hosp- or hospital beds in it. It's got a, it's got a bank in it. It's got, uh, an industrial kitchen in it that's built like kids would go into hospitality and tourism. So they actually can train their kids on those specific career sets before they put them out. They also have like three hundred business partnerships then that kids can go out and do what we're talking about in that workforce. You know, they had the opportunity to build a new high school. There's another high school that's south of me that did similar things. So it's about the idea of if we look at changing space and facility, the world that kids are going into and the jobs they're gonna pursue are not the same jobs we had ten years ago. So our buildings and facilities can't continue to be the same way they were ten years ago. We have to look at fabrication lab spaces where we're preparing kids on CNC mills, CNC lathes, CNC routers, CNC plasma cutters, not the old kind where you turn the wheel or you, you run it by hand. Because those aren't the experiences they're gonna have. They've gotta have access to three D printers, vinyl cutters, laser engravers, those kind of components, you know? And as I, one of the conversations around Project Lead the Way is it's a middle level program here. We need to expand that to the high school level. But then we have to build the fabrication lab components to be able to allow kids to experience the hands on piece. And you have a number of schools down here that have done, have built very good fabrication spaces. So I, I was joking about the blank check. But, but the whole idea is, is, is how do you build it around that pathways programming? Because I still go back to, um, one of the things we have to do is connect our kids in the community to get those people who will give them recommendations, to get them opportunities to get jobs when they choose to pursue the two year, the four year, or even if they go right to work and they wanna pursue another job that's a step up. I just read an article before I came here of an individual who started as a custodian at Gillette Children's Hospital and he's now a nurse. You know, so he got that connection and then found out how he could become a nurse and he did that. And it was in the paper this morning. So it's, that, that would be what I would pursue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Given what you know about Osseo, what are the three steps you will take immediately to reach out to our communities?
Number one, have a lot of focus groups with students. Build that relationship with kids. I, one of the things I, when I leave here today that will have a profound impact on me as I go forward was that conversation I had with students yesterday. It was so powerful. And they have a great voice and a great message. You know, they expressed concerns about inequities that exist in facilities in the district. And I think that's something as a board that we would have to work through and, and talk about. And, you know, one of the things I always say is we can think or feel something really strongly. And then it might be Tanya and I might have to, well, let's go over and talk to some kids at Park Center. You know, and walk into a classroom, go into Mr. Nolan's classroom and I'll introduce myself and I'll introduce Tanya as a board member. And let's have a conversation. What are your feelings around facilities and equity in the district? And let, let you hear that. So when we come back to a board work session, we can say, you know, this is what I think, this is what I feel, but this is what the students are saying, you know? So how do you engage in those conversations? So using that then to, to build those inroads and make connections in the community. Cause I've heard over and over and, and I thought about this, you know, I was fifteen years ago. I, I left this area to, to go east and to go south. And there were a lot of equity conversations that are very similar to the ones we're having now back then. You know, and what I wanna make sure is ten years, not ten years, three years from now, we've changed that conversation. But we really have to focus on how are we gonna change that conversation? So three things, I would spend time meeting with, with the students. Very powerful conversation with Michael. But engaging conversations with staff, the voice of the students, the voice of our teachers. And ultimately using those two groups to connect us to the voice of the community. Because through that, we're gonna be able to, at least when people are heard, they can feel like they're represented. And then we have to treat that with respect. So I would, I would spend the majority of the time connecting with those three groups.
As a follow up, are there specific thoughts you have for going out into our communities to connect with them?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know of the specific groups that are, that, that are, you know, I do rotary, I do lions, I do those kind of things now, but those are the real traditional groups. For me, it would be about learning from, from those two groups. What are some key events, components that I would need to be attend? And, and I would actually invite our staff potentially to go with me initially to some of those or connect with some of the kids to go out to what those are. Every community that's different, you know, and, and who attends those are different. So I don't have any specific examples. I would rely on the people who live here now as I come to the area and be able to connect with who those groups are. That would be important to me to learn who they are. The one thing I'll tell you is I like to talk and I'm very social. So anything anybody wants to take me to, I'll for sure go.
I have a follow up. You, you had talked a couple of times about, uh, the students you met with yesterday.
Yeah.
Here about being, you know, great groups. But you've talked about communicating with the students in the past. Have you not done that? Or is it something that, you know, we did it way better than everybody else and how is that happening?
No, so in this process, I've done it before. I think what, um, what I think was so profound yesterday was how, um, their message was strong. They had a strong understanding of what the challenges are. And they actually, they, they actually asked really pertinent questions to, this is something we would value, the very first question around. How can we bring our culture and our experiences into the classroom? How are you gonna work with teachers to make that happen? I haven't had kids ask me something that specific before. Another one, the, the very last question I got asked before I left to go on a facility tour from a student was, was a student from Osseo. And he said to me, he said, you know, there's a strong feeling that one of the high schools gets better facilities and opportunities than the other ones. And then I went on the tour and I'm sure what he was talking about is Maple Grove has a dome and they don't have a dome on the other side of the district. But that was a conversation that came directly from a student. I haven't had students get, I've had parents get that specific about inequities that sometimes exist in facilities. But the students were very point on in that. I, I do that a lot now. I just walked into a business accounting class the other day, you know? And I walked in and teacher, and he always asks the kids, you know, who is this? And, and I always track how well I'm doing, but how many of them raise their hand to make sure I'm visible enough so they know who I am. And I asked him about e-learning. Because we were, at that point, I think we had done three days. How was e-learning working? Kids were very honest. Some teachers just put homework out there. Oh, I love it. You know, I was, there was a, one of them highlighted an English lesson where there were like six components to grammar they had to do and talked about how he was using iExcel to answer questions. And so I do that often now just to, to get a, get feedback that way. What I thought about this was how pointed the kids were. How focused they were on what are you gonna do on specific issues of, I would say, around equity.
I have another follow up.
Yeah.
And I kind of alluded to it yesterday. In, in our district, and as you noted, talking to the students, um, there's a divide. And one of the, I think, strongest things that have been really communicated to us as board members and to students we hear and to staff is that, you know, how do we unify our district? And a lot of that means our community.
Right.
Reaching out. And as I listened to your answers, you know, your responses about building relationships with students and staff. And I think that is a start.
Yeah.
But going a little deeper, um, how, knowing that that's probably one of the most pressing issues we have in our district, what would you propose or what, what are your thoughts about really starting to go down the path of uniting our district?
I think.
Recognizing that we celebrate the differences.
I think, I think what, I'll tell you my experience, a major piece of that is you have to ask people, what are those, what are those pieces? Like, like I was thinking of the question around, and let's say it's the dome. We're gonna bring a contentious issue in here because it's a sports facility. But, but the one thing I'll say is we can do a lot of equity work down here and we can see results and things like that. But people will often go, you know, so I would ask the, the students, the families and the communities, what are the biggest equity things? And, and I know a lot of times what has come out for me, I actually had this in my district, district a year ago over a softball facility for girls versus one for boys. And this was a huge issue with people, was our baseball field's amazing. It's got grandstands, everything. Our girl softball field had nothing, you know? And I said, whether it's a Title IX issue or not, we put a concession stand, bathrooms, it's a hexagon, it's got two levels. We were able to go out and fundraise and generate a bunch of money. And I got a guy to donate a ton of time in kind to build that. But, and this is what I'll say, we might not like what we hear, but we may have to respond. Because the, the physical things see about equity is, that's a financial equity piece. So if people are saying it's not right that we have this over here and we don't have this over here, I don't ever want to be, well, we can't have this here. How are we also gonna get this here? You know, so we asked the community. And I mean, I get the sense from this student yesterday, he's saying, you know, if we put turf in here and we put a dome on that facility at Park Center, now I feel better, like I've been validated. Cause it, cause he, he even expressed, you know, I have to go to, I have to go over there to use their facility. But yet we're all part of District Two Seventy Nine. So some of those are, how do we answer those questions? And, and I'll say it, doesn't always have to be district money. You know, I've had incredible experiences where you've gone to people who have said, we wanna put this here, we wanna do this here. Say it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know? And then you go over and you talk to students about and get perception or a community. I'm gonna go back to that person and say, okay, here's the deal. We need seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do this everywhere. Can we reach this, reach out on this fundraising effort? In a lot of cases, they'll have connections over in different areas of the city. And, and let's fundraise five hundred thousand. And then maybe as a district, we have to come back and say, okay, we're gonna commit two hundred and fifty thousand, but we're gonna do this at all of our schools because we got people to commit this kind of money from a fundraiser. I mean, we built the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fabrication lab on all donated money when I was in Stillwater. You know, and then they went to the junior highs and they put them in there as well. But, so it's about being creative, but you gotta be willing to answer those tough questions. about being creative, but you got to be willing to answer those tough questions. If the community, if they're, and that's a, that's a financial big equity, but, but that's what people see. You know, but once you start to do those, they see that as a win.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, last question on our sheet today. How do you get your staff to be emotionally connected to you and the work of the district, and what makes you passionate about coming to work every day?
Um, yeah, one thing I've, I try to do, and this has been a, a great learning thing. I, I always say, I never want to take my teacher hat off, uh, because I think it's extremely important. If, if, if the culture isn't good for our teachers, they're never going to buy into best practice. They're never going to follow you. They're never going to believe in you. So how do I get them to be emotionally connected? Um, every year, we try to look at doing a couple things that really the teachers want to do. So some of the things we've done, our, our teachers wanted paid maternity leave. We had a younger staff and a, a number of teachers that were pregnant or having, having children. So we were able to negotiate paid maternity leave, as long as they had the days in their bank. In the past, they'd only been able to take six weeks, and it didn't matter. And that didn't make any sense to me, because we budgeted for all the days anyway. What was the difference? Um, our teachers really wanted PTO. They'd been trying for 15 years to get paid time off. We negotiated PTO with our teachers. They get 11 days. They can use them however they want. I loved it, because I don't have to get into Jessica's child's graduating in Colorado, and she doesn't have any days left, and now she's got to take an unpaid day. I felt terrible about that, because she should be at her child's graduation. So it took all of it out of that for me. We also incentivized it at the end, which it had never been. At 120 days, if they don't take one day off, we'll pay them the daily sub rate for those 11 days. And my message to the board was, we're either paying the sub or paying the teacher. So we're paying somebody either way. So, uh, our teachers wanted a Labor Day and Memorial Day calendar. So we took the minutes of instruction. We're going to add 12 minutes to every day next year. We adjusted some of our professional development stuff that we're doing. We have a Labor Day and Memorial Day calendar, uh, for our staff next year. So it, it's about hearing that vo- when I talk about voice of the teacher, voice of the student, voice of the community, those are examples where that's the voice of the teacher. Just last week, I had eight staff members who didn't fill out paperwork to change their 403B, and they missed that deadline, and there was some money there that was left on the table. And they came to me, which I appreciated. I called, uh, our rep at admin, and he said, you don't have to fix this. And I said, no. And I worked with our business manager. I talked to our board chair. It was the right thing to do for staff, because fixing that, and it was a small amount of money for us, will pay us back tenfold in the future, because I know everybody's talking about that right now. I forgot to do this paperwork, did that. So that's how I get, I, I want teachers to see me as being supportive, because they're on the front lines, and without the teachers, none of us have a role. Um, so that's, I would say, emotionally connected. Um, I'm also very visible. I was talking with Patty before I came in. I don't know how you do this job if you're not out in the schools. Uh, and for people that aren't, I don't know what they do all day. Some days I am like, am I not doing something I'm supposed to be doing? Because I'm out here and able to do some of these pieces. But I think it's really important to be seen and visible. That's important for me, for the kids to see and know me, uh, as well as the staff. And I understand this district is larger, but that's something I will never let go of, because when you, you say, I think it was what motivates me, or what, what am I, what excites me, what's passionate, what, what makes me passionate about coming to work. Um, you know, when, when, this job's a tough job, too. There's times where you get worn down. That's when I go to a classroom, and I love to watch teachers teach. Uh, it's amazing how that just reduces my stress level. And I always say, it's, it's kind of like watching a great artist paint, watching a great musician play, watching a great athlete play a sport. When great teaching happens, when they're doing a fishbowl, and you see all these kids sitting around the outside on their Chromebooks or their iPads contributing to a dialogue, and you can pull the dialogue up, and you say there's 128 responses to the conversation those four kids are having in the center of the room, that's powerful. And it's just fun to watch, and I'm always blown away by how smart our kids are. Like, there's things where I'm like, had, they're having conversations about things, and I'm like, I don't think when I was 18, I was that sharp. You know, I mean, so it's, it, it's just a really, um, that's what rejuvenates me. Uh, and like I said earlier, I'm, I'm lucky enough to have found a profession that I'm passionate about and that I love, and, and that, that is something that does rejuvenate me. So.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, with that, we've gone through our regular questions, and now here's a time for you, uh, to, uh, give us your final pitch.
Yeah. It's been a lot. Uh, I just really want to thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I was saying this morning, I, I was so thankful for yesterday in the sense that I, it was a really good learning experience for me. I felt like I was able to have a lot of good conversations with people in the district. Um, I'm really excited about the possibility. Uh, I think the communities that make up this district all have incredible strengths. Uh, I know the challenge to bring those communities together is difficult. I think that challenge has been there for a long time. Um, I think if that's what we're really committed about doing, then that's what we have to focus on. And that may be the one thing that we're pouring 80 to 90% of our effort into for the next six months or a year, but that's where we got to pour our effort into, because I keep hearing that that's the most important thing, is how do we unite and bring the district together. Um, one piece that I'd say about the achievement gap, I think I learned that I should have addressed last